You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
It being six o'clock, I'll call to order the meeting of the planning board here December 12th at Whitcomb Hall. I'll begin with the roll call. Scott Self, I'm here. Richard Lane.
Here.
Marcus Calera.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Michael York.
Yeah.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
Charlie Harbeck, you're here today, yep. And alternate Steve Malone, Michael Scungeo alternate, and Jane Johnson alternate. And we have a full board, so we don't need the alternates, so I guess we'll proceed. Tonight's agenda, we have approval of the minutes for November 21st. And under public hearings, we have planning board number 24-026. It's a boundary line adjustment application. Cardinals surveying and land planning have submitted this application on behalf of Kenneth and Marveline Garand and Carolyn Beatty. Properties are located at tax map 106, lot 69 and 70, and are within the rural agricultural district. Item B, warrant article, public hearing, zoning amendments one through seven. Under discussions and other business, we have 2025 planning board meeting schedule, that's a draft review, and wetlands conservation district proposed amendments, and anything else that comes up. Back to the beginning, regional impact. Is there anything on our agenda that requires regional impact?
No.
Is that a motion, or is that just a...
A motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Michael York that nothing on our...
I was answering your question.
You were, okay. That nothing on our agenda would require a regional impact or us to notify the surrounding towns, seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? And that's that. Brings us to the approval of minutes of November 21st, 2024. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Motion by Richard to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mark. Is there any discussion, changes, or alterations? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, we got past that. Brings us to a public hearing. That's the number 24-026, the boundary line adjustment. And that would be Cardinals surveying. Now, let's see what we have here. We have the drawing in our packets, and I think you all have the drawing. And we have the application in the packets as well, which all, to me, looks to be in order. And they've provided everything that they've needed to on the checklist. Some things do not apply, as they've checked off on there. Asking for no waivers. Anybody see anything different? If not, then a motion to accept the application as complete is in order.
Second.
Motion by Mike to accept the application as complete, seconded by Mark. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Now, we move on to the public hearing, and you're up.
Can you give any thoughts here of current surveying or something in the areas? So this is Matt Pumping, sure I, it's the, I believe it's the third house in on the right. All this is is to correct the lot line currently, the lot line showing green goes through the corner of the Darren's house. And this was noticed, these are selling their, well, they sold this one, they're in process of selling this one also. And it was noticed on the new tax maps on the areas that it was a problem. So all we're doing is an equal area lot, lot line adjustment because these lots don't need current zoning. Current zoning is three acres and 225 feet of frontage, which are 2.37 acres with 170 and 150 feet of frontage. So all we're doing is taking the line, jogging around the house, equal areas, so nothing changes. No carnage, no acreage, anything else.
Okay, pretty simple. Yep, pretty simple. And again, all they're doing is trying to make it conforming, a little bit more conforming. It's not all conforming. And are there any questions from the board on that? And there's nobody in the public, and I'm public, and you had a question, Mark?
Yeah, I just, do you know if that house is on septic in town? Or is it well-walled?
It is on town water, so it's a septic system, it's out here.
Okay.
And this is an empty lot.
Okay.
These people bought the house up, that was the reason why they didn't want to do it.
If it's in the front, that's not a problem. If it's in the back, maybe you didn't need a setback, but...
There's nothing on that.
Okay. Big kill there.
Yes, very steep.
It is very steep, yeah.
Anyone on Zoom? Nope. Okay. Then if there are no further questions?
I'll make a motion to accept the call.
I will close the public hearing. Public hearing closed. Michael, your motion? Okay, a motion by Michael York to approve the lot line adjustment, seconded by Mark. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? There you go. You're welcome.
Thanks, Wendy.
Brings us to our warrant article, public hearings, and that would be amendment one through seven. And we've had them here, and we've probably read them about a million times. I will open up the public hearing. Amendment number one. Are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number one as proposed by the planning board to amend the Swansea zoning ordinance as follows? And this would be to amend section 13 by adding amending or removing the following definitions. Again, we're crossing out corporate offices, replacing that with business offices. And the definition is buildings, building or buildings used primarily for conducting the affairs of business, industry, or government, which may include ancillary services for office workers such as a restaurant or coffee shop, healthcare facility, or daycare facility. At our last meeting, we decided to cross out such as a restaurant, coffee shop, healthcare facility, or daycare facility, because some of those zones don't allow that in there. So we can't really suggest that those that go in there, it'd be on a case-by-case basis. So what we had decided was to stop it right after the workers. So it read, or government, which may include ancillary services for office workers, period. So...
So that would be, so on the final version, then, everything after workers will not be there?
That's right, yeah. We'd figured that last time, yeah, because of some of those zones don't allow those uses in there.
Oh, yeah, I think I have a version of that without that, yeah.
So we're changing that a fair amount, so that particular amendment probably should go on our next public hearing.
Yeah, we get amendment number one.
Yeah, let's do that.
Which one is that?
That was amendment number one, and we're crossing out from, you have a copy of it there, right, Beverly? Or do you have a copy?
I don't know if it's the same one.
Right from workers.
Not usually the same one.
Okay.
No, I don't have the same one, but wait a second, Davidson here, hold on a second. I was reading the wrong one.
Maybe I've got the wrong one.
No, I'm sure you were right.
You're going by the one in the packet, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the one he was referring, and I was not referring to that one, so...
Okay.
Okay.
So after office worker.
This side?
So after office worker, period.
Is you're moving office worker?
Nope.
That's the last word.
That's the last word.
Oh, that's the last word.
And such as, starts with such as, we're crossing that out. So we're giving no examples, and it'll be a case-by-case basis.
Yep, so we'll add that, so the next public hearing will include that.
That one.
Of all the other stuff, yeah.
Yep, good. Okay, service establishment. And that definition for that, we're adding that in. That definition for that is provides a skilled service, personal labor, or expertise, as opposed to providing a product or tangible commodity. We're adding retail establishment, definition of that, sales in small quantities and/or direct to the consumer. And we're crossing out professional of our pertaining to, as, we've got that all crossed out. We aren't going to have that anymore in there as a definition. Amendment number two, it would be section four, article A, two, B, to read as follows. In addition to the aforementioned permitted uses, the following are permitted after the issuance of a special exception by the Board of Adjustment. Manufactured uses, we're crossing out corporate offices, and we're adding in business offices and industrial parks, which is already there. Amendment number three, that would be amend section five, article A, one, F, and G, to read as follows. And that's under uses permitted. In the village business district one, no building or premises shall be erected, altered, or used, and no land shall be used for any purpose except. And on F, we're crossing out retail business establishment, and we're replacing it with retail establishment. Under G, we are crossing out personal service shop or service establishment, and we're adding service establishment, or replacing it with that. That's those two. Amendment number four, we're going to amend section five, article B, one, E, F, V, yeah, to read as follows, under uses permitted, again, in the business district, no buildings or premises shall be erected, altered, or used, and no land shall be used for any purpose except. And when we get to item E, we're crossing out professional and business offices, and replacing it with business offices. Under F, we're crossing out retail sales services, and replacing it with retail establishment. And under V, we're adding service establishment. Amendment number five, amend section five, article C, one, E, F, and J, to read as follows. Uses permitted, in the village business district two, no building or premises shall be erected, altered, or used, and no land shall be used for any purpose except. And when we get to item E, we're crossing out professional business or corporate offices, replacing it with just business offices. When we get to F, we're crossing out personal service shop or service establishment, and replacing it with service establishment. And when we get to J, we're crossing out retail business establishment, and replacing it with retail establishment. Amendment number six, amend section six, article A, one, D, six, 11, and 24, to read as follows. Uses permitted, in the commercial industrial zone, no building or premises shall be erected, altered, or used, and no land shall be used for any purpose except. When we get to item six, it's business and professional offices, we're crossing that out, replacing it with business offices. Get to number 11, we're crossing retail sales and services out, replacing it with retail establishment. And item 24, it's a new service establishment. And I'm assuming there's no objections so far.
You read them so well.
I didn't, didn't get any time to object, you know, we're trying to get through here. So amendment number seven, let's see, that's amend section six, article B, two, C, to read as follows. And we're crossing out under that category permitted uses, and we're replacing it with uses permitted. In the industrial park district, no building or premises shall be erected, altered, or used, and no land shall be used for any purpose except. And when we get to item C, we're crossing out corporate offices, and replacing it with business offices. And that would conclude our amendment, up to amendment number seven. So... Anybody? Any comments?
Is the voting area open?
It is, it has been, yeah, quite some time.
I have two comments. One is that I like what you've done in terms of cleaning up the language so it's the same in all the zones. I think that was very, very well. Second question is just a curious thing. Where does a restaurant fit in? What kind of establishment is that in these definitions?
Well, restaurant is mentioned as a business, as a restaurant in wherever it is, so there's no question as to whether it's allowed or not.
So where it's not mentioned, it's not, it doesn't fall under...
That's correct. That would be correct.
Okay, good.
Yep, it's called out, it's called out as a restaurant in the code, yeah. As restaurant, there's also another variant, like a drive-through facility.
Yeah, I'm remembering questions of what retail services are and what service businesses are. We had those confusions, and so I, I like what you've done, and thank you, that clears up my questions.
Good question. Okay. And I guess no one is on Zoom. I thought he fell asleep back there. He looked like he was asleep there. Am I that boring?
No. And I think what's going to happen, those people are going to hit the, 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 the session, and they say, what? What are these all about? So I'm wondering if there's a way in the, I always want this on the ballot, but let us say the intent of the planning board is to clear, is to make the language similar. And for that reason, the following changes that I'll offer. Something like that, something to be amped, that allows people to realize what you're trying to accomplish here. Otherwise, it just seems like, I think it's on the little session, you bring up the...
I think that's where the...
You can't, that's what we're here.
I think that's where the voter's guide comes in.
You can't change it, yeah. It's in the guide, but you can't change it in that session. You can change it here, but that's it.
And so, that's, what I'm worried about is the people having come here.
Yeah.
Are going to think this is random stuff, what the heck are we doing?
Yep.
And yet there seems to be some, some verbiage that says, why don't you guys clean up the, the laundry?
Yeah, well, we usually do, and that usually falls onto our assistant here to write something up like that. And I'm sure that he'll write something up that will pretty much say...
Yeah, you guys will see something in January of whatever I write up, with this and the wetlands stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, yep. And yeah, that's something simple, right?
It's a good note. Yeah, I mean, I think the voter's guide will hopefully do that, but does everybody look at the voter's guide?
The trap is that everybody at this table is exactly the same, we're all talented.
Exactly.
For a lot of times, what happens when you spend, like, what were the elections going on, right? They'll bring in those guys, and they won't have read it ahead of time.
Yeah.
So they're trying to read through the guys.
They're too big to read through.
Too much, there's too much there.
Yep, yeah, I'll see if I can...
Anything else? Then I will close the public hearing. And I think there was, there was a mo, oh no, I already closed it, right?
Yeah.
Didn't you have a motion? Make a motion to, or you hadn't made that motion?
Probably make the motion to accept it.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Michael York to, to accept our, accept the changes in the zoning ordinance and put it on the town warrant.
For amendment seven.
To the amendments, yeah. Yeah, one through seven, correct?
Two through seven.
Oh, was it two through seven? Yeah, that's right. You're correct, yeah, because we're taking that number one, bringing it. Yeah, items two through seven.
So next, the first meeting in January, you guys will be seeing amendment number one, and then amendments number seven, no, amendments number eight through 12. One, eight through 12. It'll be noticed. It'll be okay.
We don't worry about that.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, again, that was a motion then by Michael York to move the amendments to the town warrant, seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion?
Did you have something, Richard?
No, I was just, I was just going to say, as edited, but we've covered that by saying one, coming in January.
And all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed?
Good.
None of that. Brings us to, well, continue on amendment, no way to add in here, what was it?
Planning.
Planning board meeting schedule, yeah, we had that before the...
We can knock it out first.
Yeah, let's do that. This is the schedule. It's listed, it's listed next, so we'll do that next. So we have our schedule in front of us, and runs down through the entire year. I just had one comment on it.
Yes.
And that's when we get down to November 13th, 2025. I'm suggesting we turn that to November 6th, because that gives us, at the last meeting in October, that'll give us two weeks to November 6th, and then two weeks to the 20th and on. It won't be that three-week interval.
Instead of doing back-to-back like they're doing now, yeah.
So November 6th, and when we get to December, the same thing, our, instead of the 11th, we have a meeting on December 4th. And it'll be the two week, two week, two week.
Yes.
Any other comments? Nope?
Yes.
And we want to do that?
That sounds good to me.
Then let's, let's have a motion to adopt the schedule for 2025.
With those changes?
With those changes, yeah.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brandon to adopt the schedule for 2025, seconded by Richard. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
One other thing.
Yep.
That's going to change the application deadlines.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Well, I'll change the deadlines.
We don't have to worry about that.
He's got a year to figure that out.
Yeah, I'll change the deadlines. I don't know if you guys care, but the deadline is, the deadline day, 1:00 PM. So I'm not letting them submit until 5:00 PM anymore.
Okay, yeah.
So I don't know if you guys care about that, but it's just for openness.
No, that's...
Do you applaud that?
Yeah, just letting you guys know. Got to convince the zoning board.
You want to be told advice?
Yeah.
Okay, done that. Now we're to the wetlands conservation district, the proposed amendments.
And please, there's a separate, the one in the packet is outdated. The additional paper that I put in front of all you guys is the updated one.
So this whole stack right here, and that single one?
Yep, ignore the one in the packet, great.
So what's the difference in it?
There's just some changes, a lot of changes from Cordell and Sheri.
He's already seen this?
Yep. Yep, Cordell and Sheri. So they provided the comments on that version. So Sheri, that's the one that we talked about on Monday.
Okay, so you have to say anything to change it?
No, we can talk about them though, now. I have them listed.
Okay, let's see here. Yes, come to the...
That's probably a good idea.
So let's see, all of my notes correspond to the old set, so I don't know where the changes are.
They should align roughly. It's only light changes.
Okay. So bringing us to amendment number eight, and that is amend section seven, article B, one, to read as follows. And that would be the Swansea, Swansea Wetlands Conservation District is defined as those areas of the town consisting of wetlands and any uplands, non-wetlands, within 75 feet of any wetlands. For purposes of section seven, wetlands means an area that is inundated, and that's, we're keeping that the same, right? And saturated by surface water or groundwater at a frequency and duration sufficient to support, and that under normal conditions does support, a prevalence of vegetation typically adapted for life in saturated soil conditions, or as otherwise defined by RSA 482-A colon two, and as it may be amended. If a site's vegetation has been cleared, the presence of hydraulic soil, or hydric soil, rather, shall be evidence of a wetland. Wetlands conservation condition, conservation district is sometimes referred to herein as, and we're crossing out wetlands or wetland areas, and adding in the WCD. So, coming up to the top again, probably nobody knows how I feel about this one by now, but I think that 75 feet is too much of a taking of property. And the reason is because that, those wetlands there, you're having, somebody, somebody has buildable property. They have the property rights, they've owned that land, or purchased it, or whatever. And that land from 75 feet to the wetlands is, now anyways, buildable property. And you're taking that from them, and you're still having them pay taxes on it. And that's a right that they had, and that they no longer have. And I don't think that's popular, and I don't think it's fair to do that, you know?
Isn't this state regulation, 75 feet, though?
I would say we should go to the state regulations.
But what, isn't it 75 feet, though, the state regulations?
I don't think it's...
State is 75 feet, 48, septic system.
Yeah, the state, the state is nothing. The state designates, you know, for the wetlands, but there is no 75 foot or up to 100 feet, because this could go up to 100 feet for the primary wetlands, right?
I'm confused. I thought, I thought we were dialing it back from 125?
That's a septic, that's for leach field, and the state regulates the leach field, not necessarily the septic tank, but we're regulating the septic tank as well. But that's 75 feet. But anyways, again, the state requires no buffer like that, and that's what the town of Swansea has had forever. And I don't know that it has really hurt anything with that 75-foot setback, I mean, non-75-foot setback in town.
I'm, I'm sorry, but I disagree with your position on it, because when a person purchases land, they know what they're buying.
Exactly.
And it's a buyer beware. The state has the same principle for any challenge for tax purposes, or whatever, going back, they only allow you to go back one year. But all I'm saying is, when a person purchases a property, it's up to that individual to know what your regulations are, and also, the realtor should know, and being advised of them. So I, I just...
But how about someone who purchased a property under our current zoning regulations, where there is no 75-foot taking of the buffer zone?
Then it's a grandfathered.
It is grandfathered, but they still can't develop it, because that zone is there, right? And do you mean, are we saying then that, for instance, that hot topic property over on Basile Road there, that's by a big wetland over there? So if this passed for the voters, they would still be able to build right up to the wetland, or within five feet, or whichever? Are we saying that?
Within the regular setbacks, yeah.
We're saying that. We're saying that they can do that, because, you know, you're what your grand...
I'm saying you can't, you can't, if you pass this, you can't.
Right, what you're grandfathering in is if the building is already there, close to it. Well, let's just for argument's purposes, say so. Then what you're talking about grandfather, it really doesn't work. That person has purchased that property and the rights to develop it. And if this goes through, you've taken that much of their property and pretty much put it right out the window of developing it. That's what I'm saying about buyer beware. Buyer beware, if this is passed, of course, you would know that you're purchasing a piece of property with 75, perhaps 100-foot buffer area that you can't do, can't even mow it, can't do anything in it at all. So that's why I think it's unfair.
But then there's the question of, is it a benefit overall to the...
Yeah, to the community or something, right?
Right, versus an individual, right?
And is it?
And it gets to a point where, it gets mucky. The individual has X amount of rights, but for the betterment, betterment of the community or the wetland, if we, you know, restricting it to 75 feet, in the long run, may be extremely beneficial.
How do you prove that? I mean, I'm just saying...
No, I know you're trying to be devil's, I don't think it on it.
Well, because those wetlands have existed prior to our zoning in this town, and they're still there now, unless they aren't there now, but they're still there now, and I'm saying, how has all these years since the 40s of non-75-foot setback harmed those wetlands? We'll say the one we're talking about again over by Basile Road.
I think we'd have to look at a property where someone's been built, right? So I don't know if this is a case or not, but actually, in my travels, I went down Basile Road, and there's a paving business there.
Yeah.
And it looks to me like there's some wetlands down the hill, and that paving business is right up against it. Now, I don't know if that paving business harmed that wetland or not, but it might, it might...
But that's my point. We don't know. I mean, we're taking somebody's land without even having, being able to approve, approve it, rather, sorry.
I think part of this is, is, has to do with evolution, you know? Because we're a lot more built out than we used to be. And there was a time when, you know, we had bigger lots, and just more space, and, you know, less infill development going on. And I sort of feel like this, these changes are in reaction to the development pressure that's, you know, keen as really built out, right? And there's a lot, I mean, witness what's been happening in Swansea, so there's a lot more development pressure. And I think more marginal pieces of property are, you know, to cite our recent example, that's been a marginal piece of property for a long time, right? They're being, we're being asked to review applications for development on those kinds of properties. So I think it's, I think, I just feel like land use in Swansea is evolving just because there's a lot more people living in town than used to be. I mean, it used to be, yeah, we could stay, sure.
There is.
Do whatever you want.
I thought the population's still the same, within, within reason anyway.
It grows.
Depends on how big a window, I mean, tax has been here all its life, right? So you've seen...
But it's, it's, you know, the property is, I mean, the population is rising slowly.
There were like 2,000 people probably, or 3,000 people.
Yeah, could be, I don't know, but I know it, it's still rising up there.
You know, 75, yeah.
But, you know, that's...
But we have a lot, you know, where, where, where we used to have like these village nodes of development, you know, when you were a kid, now it's like spread out more over the entire town. Just, there's more pressure to use it, the land that we have. So our wetlands are more threatened by virtue of that greater development pressure, is how I feel.
How do we undo, if we say, okay, you can build up to the edge, how do we undo something down the road? We can't.
Like what? What would happen from that? I'm just, that's what I'm asking. Yeah, what happens from that?
So did you, have you read the, what, the summary that's been posted on the website now?
The one, that free one that you guys had done, for free there, you mean? The one that you guys had done, correct, right? Yeah, I read that, yeah.
Yeah, free to you.
Yeah.
Yes, it did not cost a tax rate, it didn't either.
I know.
So you did read that?
I did, yeah.
So you did see that there has been effects to the wetlands. Now, we haven't paid somebody to go in there and study to the nth degree, that would cost a lot more what the impacts have been, but it's clear that some of the functions and values of some of the wetlands in town, where there's been a lot of development, were... in town, where there's been a lot of development, or even just mowing right up to the edge of the wetlands, have been impacted.
How?
How?
Yeah. Other than somebody's opinion saying that they've been affected with that research?
Well, this was a scientific study that we hired.
Yeah, but you just said that he was not able to go in there in depth and determine like what happened, so how does he know?
Right, well, I can't like tell you how many insect species, or whatever, have been done, but for overall trends, we know that the numbers of turtles, the numbers of salamanders, the numbers of frogs have gone down over the state over the years. The trend has been like this, and a lot of that habitat loss.
They're indicators, Steve. I mean, it's not that, you know, we're not freaking out over one individual salamander, but the fact that there's no longer habitat to support that kind of life.
Right. And you, you need upland habitat. So, I can't point to a particular scientific study right now, because I didn't come prepared to do that, but you need upland habitat to some extent to protect what's using the wetlands. It's, you know, for something like a spotted salamander, it goes back and forth. For something like a turtle, it goes back and forth between uplands and the lowlands and the wetlands. For birds, and mammals, and things like that, if you build right up to the edge of their habitat, you're forcing them farther into the wetland to get away from you. So, you've created this unusable part of the wetland for the animal. I mean, if you're a deer hunter, and, you know, watch, you're doing back...
Do they only travel seventy-five feet from the wetland and back to the wetland? Is that what you're saying?
Seventy-five feet. I've actually talked to a number of people about this, about this, and they're like, seventy-five feet doesn't seem like enough. And it's not.
It would be a hundred feet in the prime wetland, right?
This is a compromise. So, the reference I made to, I think, for instance, it was called, it was a website about, which bay, there's some bay, I'm not sure, that has a website, that they've developed some regulations around the bay.
Oh, Great Bay?
Yeah, I think it's Great Bay. And they've looked at what kinds of buffers are required to protect what. And just, like I had mentioned at the last meeting, just having a thirty-foot buffer is enough to protect it temperature-wise. So, if you think about that all-purpose storage that exists now on Bay Hill Road, where there's pavement basically within a few feet of the wetland, you think about a hot summer day, and you think about a big rainstorm, and all that pavement, and all that roof, that's had all that time to heat up in the ninety-nine degrees sun, or whatever it is that day, and then you've got a big thunderstorm that's washing all that hot water down into the wetland. What is that doing? If you've got a brook there, that's affecting your fish eggs, it's affecting your insect eggs, that could be affecting your turtle eggs, whatever else is there. That's hot water.
For how long? But for how long? You know, you get nighttime, you have radiation cooling at night. I mean, it's not going to affect it for the rest of the summer. Yeah, it might affect it during that rainstorm.
Yes. So, these are the effects that build up over time, that damage...
But the temperature goes back down at night.
Okay, but in the meantime, something's probably been shocked, and it's...
Probably, or could be. Jay?
You know, I'm sure it's right, there's some concerns, biological concerns, but there are also likely concerns for runoff and the road control. You know, if the building is close to the wetland, then there's less opportunity for runoff to percolate into the soil, which will carry soil material into the wetland, and make the wetlands border change, and actually decreases its value as a store water management, absorption of groundwater. There are other values to this besides that. Let's talk about the value of the wetland as a recreational space. You have to get to the wetland to enjoy it. So, having some space around it allows there to be access to it. You also have to be able to enjoy it without being absolutely in the middle of it. So, again, you have to be able to walk around the edges. I don't know if there's a scientific reason why seventy-five feet works. It seems to be an appropriate number. It may not be appropriate in all cases, but certainly for some of the well-established water that we have in Swansea, or every little puddle that's out there. It may be a very important figure. And maybe, maybe there needs to be more study, but the concept of protecting those waterways is really important. And it's a conflict, as you point out, between the property owner's rights and the community's rights to enjoy and benefit from the values those waters provide.
Mark?
So, you know, my concern is the aquifers. I mean, not, that's not the only, but that's the primary concern, because once something gets into the water, it's hard to get it out, right? So, you know, an example is, where I lived in New Jersey, there was a storage area who had barrels of leftover whatever from World War II, and was on a cement slab in a building, totally forgotten about. The slab crap, cracked in a couple places, the barrels rotted, and the stuff leached into the water. It wasn't discovered until people were complaining, half a mile away, that they would cook their macaroni, and it comes out blue.
Wow.
And they were like, well, why is this happening? Because the water looked clear. It was the chemical reaction that made a change. Well, it was H and orange. These people, it was in their water, their well water. We have a lot of people on well water here. We have a lot of people over the years, who knows what they've done on their property, what they stored where, whatever. By setting a precedent like this, starts to address that type of action. It makes people more aware. And that's my concern, and that's a real story.
Yeah, I'm sure that it is, but it doesn't sound like that seventy-five foot radius would have helped that any, right?
Well, it might have helped.
If those people further than seventy-five feet away were affected by it.
Because it got into the water.
Right, but I'm saying, you know, you're saying, you're saying the seventy-five foot is there to protect the aquifers.
Getting into wetlands makes it a lot easier to, you know, make its way into the aquifers.
It has been studied that the bigger the buffer that you have, it's a filter. It's picking up runoff, it's picking up chemicals, it's picking up sediment. It's helping to filter whatever's running off of the property, whether it's...
Which it shouldn't be. You know, if the planning board does their job properly, there should be nothing extra running off that property. You know, we look at drainage...
If it's a commercial development, but if it's, you know, a homeowner, right, then...
You're talking about pesticides, or anything?
Or whatever, people keep on their...
Fertilizer. I mean, it might happen on a smaller scale, but it's still...
So, the other day, I drove by, I think it's Arlington Paving, this, there on Bay Hill Road here, the all-purpose storage, and they had backed a whole bunch of dump trucks up to the edge of the wetland, they were parked, and they had lifted the dump bodies, and it was like they were letting them get washed by the rain into the wetland. I don't know what was in those dump truck bodies, but they were in the back of the parking lot.
Probably the same thing that's on the roads here.
What's that?
Probably the same thing that's on these roads was in those bodies.
Canary, yes, Paul.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think that's something that we really want in the aquifer, or whatever.
Probably not, but if it doesn't wash off the roads, it probably doesn't wash off those truck bodies, do you think?
It's washing off the roads, too, and that's just as damaging. I mean, you look at, you know...
We have that issue with Wilson Pond.
That's because of the issue, we have to have black roads. We cannot have, though we want it to slow down long enough not to have, you know, salt in the old roads. That's why we have that.
You know, the other, another thing I think about, and this is just because I'm monitoring rain all the time, so, just because I've got livestock, and pastures, and whatnot, and...
Wetlands.
Wetlands. The nature of our weather is changing, and so, what I've been experiencing saying the last ten years or so, yeah, last summer was dry, but when we have these rain events, they're huge, okay? And suddenly, like, I'm always looking at this house, or you probably are, too, you know, we get, we got an inch of rain this last event at Honey Hill, okay? I've got my rain gauge out there. And granted, it's this time of year, and the ground's a little more impervious, but, but these big flooded areas fill up really quickly now, okay? Because we do have a lot more surface area that's developed, and so, in a way, we almost be protecting property owners to force them to not develop right up to the edge of their wetlands, because the wetlands are, they're spongez, you know? That's how they store the water. And if we're getting, you know, four, or five, six inches of rain in one event, which we have been doing the past few years, it's definitely a place to go. And those things fill up quickly, but not consistently, you know? So, we'll have some years where it will look, according to the soils and the plants and whatnot, it'll look like the edge is in one place, but then suddenly, we get these huge, you know, we get our thousand rain events, which we seem to do all the time now. And the ground has to absorb that water.
But we're not talking about eliminating the wetlands at all, you know, keeping them the same way they are.
No, but, but, so protecting property, you know, if this is a way to discourage development very close to the edge of wetlands, then in a sense, we're protecting that people who are doing that development.
Against for that hundred-foot building, or fifty-foot building, or whatever, but, I mean, how much is that really going to protect?
Well, if the building is right up next to the wetland, that soil suddenly gets super saturated, then it's going to be a problem.
Not if the engineers did their work properly. If they've tested the soil, and the soil's no good for building, then they aren't going to build on it. That's the whole idea of that, what we see in the planning board here, too. But, you know, let's, we've kicked this thing around enough. So, how about ten feet?
Sure, we have to try to balance the need to protect the wetland. And I agree, you've got to protect it, but we also got to protect people's property rights. But remember, in our constitution, both states in the United States, it talks about individual property rights. It doesn't talk about community rights at all. Those are something we made up, and it's a good idea, you know, community rights, but it's not really a stretch to have. So, if these people are having to pay taxes on land they're not allowed to use, is that fair?
Well, you can get dispensations with current use. You don't have to pay taxes on your wetlands, right?
You do pay taxes on them, you just don't pay for it.
It's very little, like twenty-five bucks a year or something.
Can you guys say that, for the right here side of the wetland, so they have to say that?
You certainly can do that, yeah, in your current use application.
The state can do that, because I understand that.
It's paperwork that you send it to the town. That's super easy to, if you have wetlands on your, on your property, you should not, you can enter them into current use, and you should not be paying for...
But you're going to pay this again.
No, no, not for wetlands. As far as, unless things have changed.
I don't have any wetlands, so I don't have any...
I don't either, but what's the minimum, you don't know what the minimum is on that? I don't have any wetland.
I don't, years ago, when I was, you know, doing that paperwork for the town, there wasn't a minimum for wetlands. But, you know, we should double check, right?
Yeah, but we should check to see if that setback, whatever the number we come up with, is considered part of the wetlands, or not.
And if the state allows, you're saying, because of the state, school tax, and...
State, by law.
Yeah. Well, and again, bringing back to the state, they require no setback there for the, this is for the entire state. They, courts certainly control the wetlands, and with their wetlands bureau and all of that, you know, their dredge and fill permits, and all that type of stuff. If you want to do anything by a wetland, you got to go to that state. But they don't...
I don't think there's a ten-foot setback anywhere between one property and the next.
One property, you mean, our setbacks for the town, that's twenty feet, twenty-foot setback from the border, you know, from someone else's property, and that's twenty feet there?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm just talking about if someone has a wetland, not necessarily a property line, but just a wetland on their, on their property. That's what we're talking about, seventy-five feet from that into their property.
Just a quick, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
Just a quick, for qualified land, for current use, a tract of unimproved wetland of any size can be entered into current use. So...
Thank you.
Yes.
So, the other thing we have to address is the, what will put these properties into non-conforming lots, or non-conforming structures. That's the other thing we have to think about, because then, it's a problem for the property owner. Yeah, they're grandfathered in, they got that thing there, but as probably you know on the ZBA, anything non-conforming has to come across you guys for a variance. You've seen a lot of that with Wilson Pond, and so on and so forth. So, it'll create that as well, which is another hardship.
You're not talking about the part that we've addressed by saying that we were changing that part, versus wetland areas that are in the box of water, maybe used to satisfy a minimum lot area and setback requirements, you know?
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about a current lot that has a building, we'll say, ten feet from the wetland, and now we put it at seventy-five feet as a border area there.
Right, but doesn't this apply to new construction?
It does, but what we're saying is that if you put it, if the town votes, not you, but if the town votes to bring the seventy-five-foot border area there, which nothing can be in, other than if it's a hundred-foot or less square foot building, I think is in here, but if something is in that, that means it automatically is a non-conforming lot. It's grandfathered in, they don't have to tear it down. They can keep it there, but it's non-conforming. So, if you want to expand it, or do something to it, or whichever, you just can't go out and get your building permit. You've got to go to the ZBA to get a variance, to allow you to expand, or whatever you want to do to your barn or house that's within that seventy-five or a hundred-foot setback, which, again, is a problem, in my opinion.
And it's, you know, I had to go through that process in my house, too, so I don't understand what you're talking about, Scott. I think, I'm trying to get my thoughts in order here, but I think the whole idea of, perhaps we need to look at, how does the state define a wetland? Does it define it as...
Exactly as we have written right here.
Exactly.
Exactly, word for word. There's a little bit extra in what you guys have presented, but exactly word for word out of the RSAs is what it is.
So, if we as a town define the wetland as including that, plus a little area of the exterior of it, is that violating state law?
I don't think so. I don't think it does, no.
We're allowed to do more than what the state, the state, the state thing is a minimum.
Yeah, that's right.
Right. So, I'm saying that we're not, when we say a wetland for Swansea is defined as a state wetland area plus buffer, we're not changing the state law in a way we can't do. We can always do that.
Yeah, you can always go more, you just can't, you can't do it.
Whether it's used to do that or not, is the question.
Swansea is pretty special, because Swansea has one, I can hold, has one of the best aquifers in the state.
I'm sure it doesn't.
So, we are learning that if we agree that wetlands are worth protecting, wetlands themselves are worth protecting, and that wetlands are important to our aquifer, we are now learning that you can't really protect a wetland in isolation. You have to protect some upland with the wetland, if you really want to protect the wetland, and you really want to protect the values and the functions that it brings to the town, you have to give it a little space to breathe, you have to give it a little space to work. You can't just say, okay, we're going to build right up to this wetland, and surround it with parking lots and buildings, and have it still continue to do the functions and values that we're asking it to do, that it's providing to the town. So, if we really want to protect our wetlands, we will better protect our wetlands than what we're doing now. And our wetlands are what's protecting our, or what's supplying our aquifer. And if we value that aquifer, and we want to protect it right, then we'll take the advice of the experts that we just hired, who are telling us that having a buffer, an emetated buffer, is the best way to protect our wetlands, and protect our aquifer, and ultimately protect ourselves.
Yeah, it could be the best way, but the state doesn't think so. And, you know, I'm coming from that, too. You know, I see what you're saying.
The state is creating a minimum.
That is correct, that is correct, but if it, I feel if it really damaged the wetlands, since they protect the wetlands, if it really damaged that, that buffer area not being there, then they would have at least a minimum buffer area, like they do for the septic systems there. They have the seventy-five-foot septic system to a wetland. They set that up, but nothing else. And again, I'm coming from part of why we're here on these boards here, because we're elected on these boards by the people, obviously, who want us to, or expect us, or don't have time to read all the stuff that we have to read. And they may or may not understand some of that stuff, and they expect us to research it and understand it. And then they also expect us, when we vote on it, to vote with their best interests in mind. And again, as you know where I'm coming from, I don't think it's their best interest in mind to take some of that property, so I'm still of bad opinions.
It's a tension, it really is. It's, you know, at one extreme, or not, you know, one end of the continuum, it's to have, oh, you know, I own my land, I can do whatever I want to do with my land. And at the other end, it's, you know, sort of claiming as a town that we really value our water, you know? I mean, that's really one of our amazing assets in this town.
It is, but it's not only the wetlands, you know, that contribute to that. A lot of the recharge, I would say more recharge area is on the bottom of that hill over there, because that's where that, where that seam of land hits the seam of the mountain coming in there, a lot of recharge. coming in there, a lot of recharge, right in there into the wetland, I mean, that wetland's into the aquifer. The wetlands are there, and they're, they've kind of formed a liner in the wetlands, in the bog areas and all that type of stuff, because initially they were lowlands, is what happened, and the water goes into a lowland, you can see this on a mud puddle anywhere around here. Water goes into lowlands, it brings the fine, fine sediment, organic material, and it starts to build up in there and forms a seal in there, and pretty much you've got a swimming pool in there, and the water seeps very slowly, it seeps through it, but it seeps very slowly through there, as compared to, we'll say, lands by the mountains or even actually the top of the hill right here or something like that. So, yeah, there are recharge area, but there are better recharge areas. And I'm not saying that we need to disregard the recharge areas of the, the swamps or the wetlands or whatever. Again, I'm saying about the buildable property around it.
The only other comment I think is that if you did change Swansea's definition of a wetland to include a buffer, then all of a sudden that's the wetland you put into current use. So just going to say.
We think there, yeah. I don't know, we don't know that, we'd need to research that.
You designate it yourself, you map it out yourself, you know, what the wetland is, and you make your application.
Yeah, you do, but what, what I think Mike brought up is that, is the state going to let you take that kind of land and take it out of the tax bills there that sent, goes to the state?
Well, actually, it's the selectmen who are, over, who are supervising that decision, because the selectmen, or, you know, the town administrator does review those applications.
We're going to have to look into that further, but, uh, we need, we need to get beyond this one, so what are we going to do? Are we going to go seventy-five feet? How about ten feet, like I said before?
I'm, I'm very happy to respect the work that the conservation, I feel like Conservation Commission has done a phenomenal amount of, of really careful, conscientious work to arrive at this recommendation. And I didn't have to do that work, so I'm very happy about that. But I'm very grateful to you guys for having done that work and, and done the research and, and worked with experts and authorities in this area and researched other towns. I feel like you've got a really solid justification for what you've arrived at, and I feel like you're bringing this expertise to us, and I want to endorse it, because this is, this is the best information we've ever gotten on this topic before, so.
You're talking about that study?
The study and, and the conclusions and the recommendations that follow from it. So I, I just really respect what you've done and I appreciate it, and I, I want to, if you say we should do this, I think we should do this.
Yeah, and we're not saying, not saying that they didn't put a lot of work into it and that they're, they firmly believe what they, they're doing there, and they did do a lot of work.
And I, I understand also that it's a compromised number, too, made that clear to us, that I think you would have happily asked for a bigger number.
Well, didn't that number come, didn't it come from Fitzwilliam's? Don't they have seventy-five?
Yeah, I mean, this was something we went over with Moosewood to look at what would be appropriate.
Yeah, but a lot of this came from Fitzwilliam's ordinance, I think.
And he pointed us to Fitzwilliam's ordinance and said he thought it was a good example of a tiered ordinance that.
Looked pretty familiar.
That gave more protection to the top ten percent of wetlands in town, and then a baseline of good protection to the rest of them.
Mm-hmm. But again, it's, it's a figure taken out of thin air.
Well, not really.
Yeah, it is, really.
Actually, we put it back for more. And I, as I was mentioning, the, the, the study that they did where they came up with the information for Great Bay was ninety-eight feet was the spot, the sort of sweet spot that protected most of the functions and values of the wetland. Three hundred feet was what protected the most upland wildlife habitat associated with the wetland. So if you really wanted to protect your wildlife, it was three hundred feet. So we felt like this was a pretty good compromise, and we're not lifting this out of the air.
And think about the shoreline protection zones, eighty-foot, hundred-foot, fifty-foot, what, you know?
Yep.
Those are all, those are all there for reasons.
But at least they're set by the state. I mean, at least the state said that.
I don't think the state really is on what the state law is anyway, it's necessarily on the cutting edge.
Yeah.
That makes sense, given what.
Could be, could be, not be.
It's involved making decisions at the state level.
But I'm just, I'm just saying, yeah, you brought up the shoreline's protection, and yeah, that is in state RSAs, so everybody goes by that, but this one isn't. So what are we doing? We voting on something? Somebody going to make a motion? We got to move this along, we got other stuff to do here. You want to make that motion?
Yes.
What is your motion?
My motion is that the planning board accept the recommendation of the Conservation Commission to recommend to the voters this amendment to, amendment number.
How about just stick to the seventy-five-foot buffer? I have another thing to add into this thing, or not add into, just discuss with it.
Okay.
So you're talking about, you recommend that, that we keep the seventy-five-foot buffer?
That we accept the Conservation Commission's recommendation of the seventy-five-foot buffer.
Okay.
To wetlands. To wetlands.
Need a second.
Second.
Second by Mark.
Okay.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Oh, sorry, any discussion, but we've discussed it all, okay, so.
Hold on a second, who did the second? Was it Mark?
It was Mark Moore.
Mark, okay, thank you.
So all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
All right.
So, yeah, bring your hands, because we know we're going to get it close over. We have one, oh, you aren't voting. You aren't, you aren't seated, so, oh, no, you are, I'm sorry, you are, yeah, sorry, go ahead, vote. I'm confused here, okay, we got one, right? One, two, three, four, and all those, four, four, and all those opposed, that might be me.
Two, three.
Three. So motion carries. So the next thing I had on that, and it was just a small thing at the bottom of that paragraph, we're talking about, it says, "If a site's vegetation has been cleared, the presence of hydric soil shall be evidence of a wetland." And I just wanted to add in there, "The presence of hydric soil as determined by a certified soil scientist shall be evidence of a wetland." That's probably implied, but it probably should be said, that that's how you're going to determine that that soil indicates a wetland, so.
Do you think that, I mean, number two, I think it gives that.
It does, yeah, we have it in there, we have it in there further down, right? I mean, you know, you're talking about how a wetland's determined on amendment number nine, correct?
I think so, yeah.
But we're still on number one, and it just says, we're talking about, "If a site's vegetation has been cleared, the presence of hydric soil shall be evidence of a wetland." So the property owner's going to say, "That's not hydric soil right there," and you guys are going to go on there and say, "Yeah, that's hydric soil right there." So you need to have it in there that "as determined by whom?" And who determines that would be a soil scientist, because they dig down there eighteen inches or whichever, and determine what the soils are and say whether it's a wetland or not.
So that would allow this, this section to stand on its own, basically, is what you're saying? You wouldn't have to refer to the following section to where it describes.
Well, it's, you could move that to the other section there, but it's just, if that statement wasn't there, we wouldn't need that, but you're saying that if somebody cut it all down, saying that, "No, that's not a wetland," and the Conservation Commission says that, "Yes, that is a wetland," who's going to determine it? You guys or the property owner?
Yeah, I feel like we had something in here earlier that we might have cut out for the state to broadly.
You might, but it should be where it's needed. This is where it's needed.
I'm agreeing, I think, I think there needs to be something put back that says, "Go to the soil scientist."
So parentheses, "as determined by," are they licensed?
Professional soil scientists.
Yeah, professional soil scientists.
Professional soil scientists.
Professional soil scientists.
Yeah, be right after hydric soils there.
Right.
Got it.
I've got it in here, too.
Okay, "as determined by that," okay. That was the only other change I had on that. So, let's see, with the two amendments, amendments of seventy-five feet and the amendments of "as determined by a certified soil scientist" or however, however we worded it, any other changes to that amendment number one, I mean, number eight? If not, we need a motion to move amendment number eight to our public hearing, our warrant, article public hearing, which would be the January something or other?
I'll make that motion to move.
Okay.
January ninth.
Okay, motion by Mark to move amendment number eight.
As modified.
With, yeah, with the modifications to our meeting on January. January ninth, okay, it was right there, yeah. January ninth. All right, that'll be our public hearing for these articles.
Yep.
You second that?
Yes.
Okay, second by Richard. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Okay, amendment number nine. Let's see, here we are, this is ad, section six-seven, article B-two, to read as follows. And this is determining the wetlands, okay? It says, "Wetlands include but are not limited to any freshwater wetland, which includes marshes, swamps, bogs, and wooded bottomlands. Determinations of the boundaries between wetlands and uplands shall be made in accordance with the methods," and it says outlines, should say outlined, right? Outlined.
Yeah.
Are you looking at the right one?
Oh, oh, I have, I must have the wrong one, there are two of them, we got to, we got to not do that, I mean.
Well, I mean, that, I, it was changed.
It was changed after we took it out, but, yeah. So, or, or at least just let me know it's changed. So let me get back to this. Let me just read it to see what the difference is here. Oh, I'll just read that one. Okay, "Wetlands include but are not limited to any freshwater wetland, which includes marshes, swamps, bogs, vernal pools, and wooded bottomlands, and any surface waters, including rivers, streams, and intermittent streams, and the land under said waters, accepting fourth-order streams and designated rivers, lakes, and ponds, covered by section seven. Shoreland Protection District determinations of the boundaries between wetlands and uplands shall be made in accordance with methods outlined in the 1987 U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual Y-87-1 and the Regional Supplement to the Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual, North Central and Northeast Region, Version 2.0, or as amended." There. Have you ever seen that, what they're talking about?
I'm tired.
Have you ever seen that manual, what they're talking about there? Take a look at it online sometime. That's.
Is it scary?
Not really, no, it's not scary, but it, it really is very technical as to how they determine these things.
It's so scary.
So anyways, that, that's a big one right there. So, let's see.
That's going to slow down the voting process, huh?
Just reading that is going to slow it down, yeah, so.
You get prepared to yell that?
Discussion, discussion on that. Any discussion on that?
I'm not touching it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let's, let's keep that one in mind, because we can have a, a motion to do most of the rest of them there. We can mo, we can have a motion on every single one, but if there's not much discussion on that, then we can just continue on to the next ones. Want to do that?
So.
Or discussion, everyone. Next one. Amendment number ten. This is men, section seven, article D, to read as follows, "Uses permitted. Uses permitted in a wetlands conservation district provided that all required permits have been obtained are as follows." See, so we're crossing out water impoundments to the extent that wildlife considerations will allow an construction of wells for water supply. We're taking that whole thing away, and we're adding in, "Construction of wells for water supply or man-made ponds as permitted by New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services." We're crossing off item number two, which is the drainage ways, streams, creeks, or other paths of normal runoff water, and we're adding in a new number two, which is wildlife habitat development and management. And I did have an addition on that on my, and it might be somewhere else, because I don't know what else is in there, but I had in that one under the management, including fences, because, Mark, you brought up that, that the city of Keene is looking to put a fence near the runway. And isn't that wetland somewhere over there?
It is a wetland.
It'll be in, so.
So it will be a wetland.
So if they can't, you know, if we don't have fences in there, then they got to go to those guys to get a variance with that fence up there. So you guys are looking at that, are you, do you, are you in favor of them putting that fence up or no?
I would disagree that you can just go randomly and put a fence across a wetland. I think you should need to go get permission or a variance or whatever it requires to do that, because, um, you know, you're, you're bisecting potentially an important wildlife habitat or creating a barrier that's going to be a little clogged full of stuff and created damage, you know? You can't, you shouldn't just do that because you think you want it.
Anybody else?
I do.
Leave it out?
Yeah.
Leave out fences? Okay?
My keys.
So, what, Mike?
My keys went out. I would say that, that I think the zoning board, who are looking at the variance, will decide whether this was a reasonable ask or not, and in the case of the airport, it might be, I'm not saying what I feel exactly, but it might be a reasonable ask as regards to somebody else who are going to place their, kind of, deal with the wetland and so on else. So I think it's a case-by-case basis.
Are we, do we know how much of a?
You leaving the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we know how much distance is required from the end of the runway to be allowed to construct the, the fence?
We don't really need to get into that. I just brought that up, because Mark brought up one or the other meeting, we've got a bunch of stuff to get through here.
They brought up Conservation Commission, we looked at it, uh, we did look at it, and apparently they're, they're either okay, or you can get MAAA rules, but there, there's several different controls they're looking at. The one they favor is, is the right distance, the right, right distance from the runway, but does, in a couple places.
Encroach?
Encroach a foot or so into the line. No, it's fair, it's moving.
I don't know if it's a foot or so, I don't know, but.
No, you'll find out when they come along. And that's just to keep deer off the run rate, correct? Deer out of their.
Other animals, yes.
Oh, they're animals, too, okay.
But how many deer they say they're off the run rate? Fifteen, maybe, so.
Yeah, probably so. Run out there. So that was number, the new number two, which was number three. So now we got to the old number four. We'll be renumbering those afterwards, okay? I'm, I'm.
Well, no, they're, they're numbered correctly.
Okay.
It's just, it looks, it just looks weird, it looks crazy, yeah.
Okay, so that's the new number three, the wildlife habitat.
Yep.
Okay.
No, sorry, that's, that's the new number two.
New number two, okay.
The next one's the new number three.
Next one's the new number three. Okay, I see, you got it, number three there.
I have to cross it like that?
I'm just, all right, let me just get to my copy here.
It's like the bouncing ball.
Uh, we're on, okay. So, brings us to number three, and we're crossing out parks and such recreation uses as are consistent with the purpose and intent of section C. That's gone. New number three, this is allowable uses. Okay, conservation, conservation areas and footpaths, footbridges and boardwalks providing for pedestrian recreational uses such as fishing, hunting, hiking, bird watching, and nature study provided. A, said structures are constructed so as to permit the unobstructed flow of water, and, B, the natural contour of the wetland is preserved. Any comments on that one? And I will check my notes to see if, I don't think I have any comments on that one either. If there are no comments on it, we will move along. Then we're moving along. This brings us to number 4. Let's see here. Yeah, that's the new number 4, right? That was number 5, 3, 4, yeah. Okay. Number 5, we're crossing out conservation areas and natural trails. Okay. New number 4. Open spaces as permitted by subdivision regulations and other sections of the ordinance. Okay. Number 6, old number 6 was forestry and tree farming in wetlands, that's crossed out as an, as a use. New number 5, forest management and tree farming within 75 feet of wetlands, consistent with best management practices published by the New Hampshire Department of Resources and Economic Development and a UNH cooperative extension. Let's see. So, old 8, old number 8, agriculture in wetlands, crossed out. New number 6, agriculture within 75 feet of wetlands where it does not impair the function and values of the adjacent wetlands, consistent with the best management practices published by the New Hampshire Department of Agriculture. Markets in food, that's the new one. So that's within that 75-foot buffer, right? You're saying, you're talking about agricultural uses? Okay. Any discussion on that one?
I really like the best management practices, but is that, is that always gonna be the entity that's gonna be issuing those best management practices? I don't know. I don't know.
That's a good question, actually.
That would be, you know, if we're tying it.
Yeah.
As, by the appropriate state agency or whatever, you know, if there'd be a more vague way, we could, whoever's in charge of issuing those best management practices.
It's a good note.
Could we just put the state of New Hampshire instead of the department or? I don't know. How do you even keep up with that?
I don't either. I just know that I've looked, sometimes I, just for fun, I look up some of these things that we cite and like, they don't exist anymore or...
Right, they've changed the name of the department or something.
So do we want to hold that one until we find that out, Victoria, or do we want to just continue?
Let's, let's keep moving forward.
Okay, so we're leaving it as...
That's a note.
Put a pin on it, yeah.
That's a note.
Maybe instead of a best management practices published, it could maybe say as defined by New Hampshire Department of Agriculture?
Well, I don't know if it's gonna be the department that is in charge of it.
Okay, let's leave it like that then. It's close enough because we know what we made anyways, right?
If, if we come up with something...
Our lawyer thought it was okay.
What's that?
Cordell thought it was okay.
Okay. I read that.
But it's, it's still a good note. I agree with your point.
Send his way down there. So we're crossing out old number 9, which was the construction or reconstruction of fences, footbridges, catwalks, wharfs, and structures that enhance the site as wildlife habitat provided. And Friday, again, these are all crossed out. Provided, said structures are constructed so as to permit the unobstructed flow of water, and, B, the natural contour of the wetlands is preserved. Again, not allowed. Number 10, we're crossing out that one too, which is the old alteration of the surface configuration of the land by filling or dredging, provided that, A, again, crossed out, the alteration enhances the wetland wildlife aspect of the site. B, we're crossing that out, the natural contour of the wetland is preserved. 11, we're crossing this out, construction of streets, roads, other accessways, and pipelines, power lines, and other transmission lines. And we're placing, replacing that with a new number 7, which again is under uses, permitted uses. Maintaining, repairing, or replacing an existing and lawfully located structure or public utility, provided that the work conforms to the general standard, standards adopted in this section. Okay, and that was amendment number 10, I think, right? All of that was number...
10, yeah.
10, yeah, okay.
And could we, could we talk about adding streets and roads there? I feel like I didn't try to add that. I don't see it there now.
Streets and roads.
Where it says structure or public utility, I thought you were gonna put in the off-way streets and accessways or something, or streets and accessways or something like that.
Uh, we can, yeah. So, lawfully located structure or public utility.
Well, we, we mentioned that, Chair, we mentioned that, that last meeting that we're at, you know, about that, about, because there are sometimes streets and public ways that do have to be in there, but we had thought about making just that, construction of streets, roads, and other accessways as a special exception for, for that maybe. Not an, not an actual use.
I can't, I can't remember.
Do you want to do that? Or just leave it as an allowed use?
We would need to add a special exception. We're getting to that, but we don't have a special exception section.
No, we don't. That would be it, with that one in there. But do we want to do that, a special exception or no? Or do we want to just add it as allowable use?
Well, Sherry and I were talking about this when we met.
And what did you come up with?
So, I don't, I don't know if special exception is the way to go. A special exception implies that it's permitted with an extra layer of protection essentially. These things wouldn't be permitted. They would, if you wanted to do it, you would need to get a variance. And I don't think a variance is necessarily a bad way to go if you want to do this. I just wanted to wait for your input, so.
So, leave it out then. Because a varian, again, a variance, those guys would be looking at it.
They would be looking at it.
Conservation Commission would be at the meeting and all that business.
When it comes to wetlands, I think variance, it adds that extra layer of review that you guys I think want.
Yeah.
Yeah. When you look at, does it satisfy the basic idea of you?
Exactly.
Of the ordinance? And so that means that if the ordinance is basically protecting the wetlands, does this use damage the wetlands or?
Well, yeah.
There's a more criteria than that that you used though, right?
The good thing about a variance is that they need a hardship. And if somebody has a hardship, they shouldn't be able to get a variance.
But, but one of the things is, does it satisfy the main idea?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if you're missing one, then the thing's out.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is if the basic idea is protect the wetlands, then you look at it and say, is this, is this billable or is this...
Yeah. So, well, I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Well, we, we, that number 10, so I think this right here, we're just talking about existing, that you're permitted to fix existing things.
Yeah.
So, if your driveway's existing, but it got washed out and you need to fix it, are we allowing people to just fix it?
Yeah, that was already, we went over that. Yeah, that's already allowed, correct? Unless we didn't get to it.
Not yet, because that's why I wanted to add it back into this.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Because this is for maintaining, repairing, or replacing existing things in, in that...
Instead of saying public utility, could we just say public, no, public infrastructure wouldn't cover private driveways?
I just wanted to add, and I think we had added like streets and accessways or something like that.
Could we do public slash private infrastructure?
Would that, do you think that would cover it?
It would, but it also might widen it. I don't know if that widens it too much.
I don't, I don't mind which words you use. I just want to make sure that, that's, that's covered, and it should be covered there.
So, public utility, roadways, comma, roadways.
You're really talking about access.
Or accessways. So, public utilities or accessways.
Whether it's a road or a driveway.
Be careful, it doesn't sound like public, because that, that part is modifying accessways. Might be private accessways.
Yeah.
How about, what is lawfully located structure, street, or, or accessway or public utility?
Public utility, yeah.
So, lawfully located structure, streets.
Public streets?
Public streets.
Accessways.
So we have to say public though, I guess?
Lawfully located streets.
Structure, maybe not street, maybe, structure, road, or accessway?
We had it before, yeah, we had it before, streets, roads, and other accessways. Before, and we're crossing that after we had that in there.
Yeah, there was something with the, I, I think, I think that's acceptable for now. Yeah, I, I think that's, so, lawfully located structure, streets, accessways, or public utilities.
Okay, yeah.
Which is the one that's been crossed out.
No, it's...
Close to it.
11 was crossed out.
I know, it's very, it's very tough to read.
But you're using that same wording?
Where?
Number 11.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Construction of streets, roads, and other accessways. Okay, it's already in there.
The same, the same wording, right?
It is. I think it is, but is that what you had down there?
We left roads out, but, yeah, it could be streets, roads. Do we need streets and roads? What's the difference?
The same thing.
Yeah, so do we have just streets and accessways?
Fix these minutes.
You'll be up all night?
No, I'm not. He's gonna fix them.
All right. Are we on till 11?
Streets, roads. Construction of streets, roads, because, yeah, this language is already crossed. It was already 11.
We had it in there as, it always has been allowed in there, but we're adding...
Construction of streets, roads, and accessways. So pipelines, power lines, and other transmission lines needs to remain crossed out.
Yeah, because that's covered under utilities. We have public utility in there, right?
Yeah.
That's covered under that.
Good lord.
But we're still talking about maintaining, not construction.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Utilities along with streets, roads.
Read us the whole thing back, Adam. You done? Got that?
Sure.
Read us the whole thing back right from number 7, maintaining.
Yep. Maintaining, repairing, or replacing an existing and lawfully located structure or public utilities along with streets, roads, and accessways, provided that the work conforms to the general standards adopted in this section.
Yep.
Sure. Yeah, sure is my, sure, sure, sure.
Okay. Yeah, that's the wording that we're probably gonna go by. Shall we go to amendment number 11? Remember that one, right? Number 11, let's see. That would be amend Section 7, Article E, to read as follows. And this is E, special provisions. We're crossing that out and putting in requirements. And we're talking about no leach field, septic tank, pump chamber, or dry well may be located and we're crossing, want me to read the cross out part? Yeah, I'll, I'll read it out anyways because people are on the line, listen, maybe. No leach field, septic tank, pump chamber, or dry well may be located, and we're crossing this part out, closer than 125 feet to any designated wetland. And then we're adding in, it'll read, this is confusing, no leach field, septic tank, pump chamber, or dry well may be located within 75 feet of wetlands. Expansion of an existing system to accommodate additional loading shall be considered new construction. In instances of septic failure certified by the town of Swansea help officer, the, and we're crossing this out, 125-foot, and we're replacing with 75-foot requirement is waived if a licensed septic designer certifies to the help officer that a crossed-out 125-foot added 75-foot setback is not possible. In that event, system can be replaced to state specifications. Good with that?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, good with that? Number 2. Wetland areas excluding bodies of water, we just added that in there, will not, we're crossing that out, says may be used to satisfy minimum lot area and setback requirements. We're crossing out, and may not be used when applying a residential density factor. And we're adding in, provided that 75% of the minimum required lot size is contiguous non-wetland, and that the contiguous non-wetland area is sufficient in size and configuration to adequately accommodate all required utilities, such as wellhead and sewer disposal for onsite septic tanks and leach fields. So, let's see. So, the question on this one here is, should we add in or make notation of that buffer area? The 75-foot buffer area we're talking about? Are we letting them use that area as well, or are we excluding that from it? Again, it reads, wetland areas excluding bodies of water may be used to satisfy minimum lot area and setback requirements. Are we including that 75 feet in that requirement there? I think we should, if we're talking about the wetlands, right?
I think we are.
But we, I think we need to make it clear because it isn't stated in there, so.
This was the kind of give and take, right? So I think, yeah, I think...
I don't know about give and take, but we're just, we just have to clear it up.
Instead of wetland areas, maybe we should say the wetland conservation district, or is that what you're saying? We want to clarify that?
We could just clarify that, that it includes the buffer areas? Or the, yeah, you define it as WCD, correct?
Yes. So instead of saying wetland areas, you want to change that to the wetland conservation district?
Yep.
Or land within the wetland conservation district.
So, WCD, you're using a WCD.
So, the WCD excluding bodies of...
Excluding bodies of water may be used to satisfy minimum lot area and setback requirements. Yeah, that includes the 75 feet, then that's clear. Okay. Uh, let's see, down on here, provided that 75%, or, did I go through that? I did go through that.
You did.
Yep. So, the only thing we changed was adding the WC, I mean, WCD. So, we good with that?
You?
Good with that, yeah. Okay. Let's see, now we have number 3. No new structure or building greater than 100 square feet in area shall be located within 75 feet of wetlands. Number 4. No parking areas may be located within 75 feet of wetlands. Number 5. No underground fuel storage tank or tank containing other hazardous materials shall be placed in the WCD. Number 6. No soil removal or change to the surface topography of soil or modification of existing drainage characteristics, including disturbance of water levels, water table, or water runoff patterns, shall be allowed in the WCD. Number 7. No dumping, discharging, or placement of fill of any kind shall be allowed in the WCD. And number 8. No storage of junkyard materials or equipment, such as construction equipment, vehicles, or anything containing hazardous substances, within the WCD unless housed in an allowed structure such as a covered garden shed. And we do have a number 9. Good with that one, number 8, right? Number 9. All wetland buffers, area within 75 feet of wetlands, will be required to maintain, remain, sorry, remain in naturally vegetated state or be planted to native vegetation without regular mowing, spraying of pesticides or herbicides, or herbicides, herbicides, whichever you say it, or other activity that will damage the buffer's ability to filter and slow water entering or leaving the wetland area. And that, that's all of number 11. Yeah. No comments on all of number 11? Okay. Number 12. Add Section 7, Article F, to read as follows. F, areas exempted from this section, this is a new section. Areas exempted from this section will include wetlands associated with currently functioning and maintained man-made ditches and stormwater treatment swales. Number 2, sedimentation and/or detention basins or ponds. Number 3, agricultural and irrigation ponds or swales. Number 4, firepond systems and related facilities. Let's see, to be exempted, such features may not have been constructed as part of a compensatory mitigation or created in what was previously, or were previously jurisdictional wetlands. And that's, yeah, okay. That's the whole number 12. Comments on that? Nothing? Okay, so that brings us up to a vote on article, let me make sure I'm correct here.
Line...
We've got number...
Through 12, right?
We're doing...
Was it 8?
No, wasn't it? We're bringing one back.
We did 8.
We're bringing the first one that we read back.
Was it? And that was our amendment number 8, correct?
Wait.
Coming back, is that?
8, 8 we approved.
Yeah, we, yeah, and actually, I think we were only bringing one back from the previous set.
So, we're going 8? Yeah, there was number 7. I don't know. That's up here.
It was number 1. It was very top of the...
Okay, it was, yeah, it was.
Such as a restaurant, a coffee shop.
That was it.
Dropping that.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
That's the one we're looking at.
So, nothing in this one here.
Yep.
Okay. So we are going on the full 8, yeah, because we, we voted on number 8 on the change of the number 8. We added something in number 8. Right, so we did already vote on that one. So we're going through number 9, the 9, 10, 11, and 12 in their entirety.
And I, I do have a couple of discussion topics from Sherry that we talked about in our meeting, just before we vote on it, just to read, read the group here. There is an option to kind of make it, we, we brought up the fact that you could get a variance to any of these sections, like you can with anywhere else in the code.
Yep.
However, there is nothing in the code that explains the variance process. Do we want something in the ordinance? Do we want a section in the ordinance that says what the variance process is? Like, if, if you don't align with any of these ordinances, you can apply for a variance if you meet these criteria, or do we just want to leave it?
Aren't these, isn't this ordinance contained within our zoning ordinance?
Yeah, but our zoning ordinance, it doesn't, doesn't have a section called variances.
I thought it did, I'm pretty sure it does, it's in the back.
It goes in the time limits.
Towards the end, there's a
It's in the back of it.
There's a section that talks about variances and special exceptions.
And even if
Determination of variances and special exceptions, time limits on special exceptions.
Isn't that the curvy of the TDA?
It is.
And they have the criteria that is handed to them by the state that they have to
Well, we're all governed by those RSAs, right, they're in the RSAs, that's what their criteria is.
I don't see the need of doing anything special.
Well, we've probably got enough wording in here, and then we don't need that anymore, but it's, it's always a good idea to have in the zoning about the special exceptions and variances, just for somebody reading through it, but I'm pretty certain it's in here.
Page 78.
78, you got it?
I think, that's what you're looking for, for sure.
And let's find out.
There is a reason, there is a reason, I just forget what the reason was.
That's not it.
And it might, if you do have a section that talks about it, it might even be good to put a little something referring to that section, say, if you all fuck against this E section.
Section
Richard's got it here on page 78.
For the definition.
He said, yeah, it's under definition, right, yeah, variance, an act tells the Board of Adjustment, yeah, the terms and regulations will not be contrary to the public interest, where owing to a special, special conditions, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the regulations will result in unnecessary hardship, and so that the spirit of the regulations shall be observed and substantial justice done.
That was the criteria I was talking about.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Those are the ones that they have to respond to.
They do, yeah.
Do you have that, and you have that paragraph that I wrote, just a couple sentences, I was trying to
I do. It's, it's mainly seeing if we want to add anything to the wetland district, so, any person planning to perform an activity or conduct work within the WCD that is not permitted by this ordinance, and would require a construction permit, subdivision approval, site plan review, et cetera, shall apply for a special exception and must show that no reasonable alternative exists which would avoid wetland impacts, and that detrimental impacts of the WCD will be minimized, however, it was a good, it was a good thought, it's a good paragraph, it's a well-written paragraph, I had responded to that, I can't find it out, my response to that was essentially, if it's, if it's not permitted, then a special exception isn't the avenue, a variance is the avenue, so.
Yeah, it didn't matter which one, we were
It was still a good, yeah, so you could, you could replace special exception in that paragraph
Yeah.
With variance, but where, where we, the question is, where do we fit it?
Yeah.
I think under nine was our thought, if we wanted it in there, under, under this section would be where we would fit it.
I don't think we ought to put it in, we have enough in there.
When, when somebody's applying to do something coming for a permit, they're going to find that they need to get variance.
Yeah.
And your ordinance will help them get variance, and so
I, I think it's a, yeah, it's a good thought, but I, I'm not really sure if it's needed.
Probably not, if they're working in or around the wetlands anyways, usually they're getting a permit from the state DES as well, any of that stuff, any little dredge and fill or anything they're doing there.
Yeah.
So, you're going to get those.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to write anything about a variance or special exception, but it did bring up another interesting point, the fact that Swansea doesn't have a conditional use, a conditional use process or application, is that something this board would be interested in?
Explain that, what do you mean?
So, you would have a conditional use permit, so, conditional, I'm trying to explain it, I'm not doing a good job.
That's why I asked you.
Yeah, I, I'm wondering if there's a reason why Swansea doesn't have a conditional use process.
Well, you aren't talking about our conditions when we approve something, right?
Nope.
Those are conditional, that's a whole different story.
It's kind of like a special exception, but it's not, it's not quite the same, maybe this is a topic for next year.
But in, but in the process, they ask for the conditions that would justify a special exception.
Well, a conditional use is more so
So, it's close to being the same thing.
It kind of is, but, I, I'm not going to
Is the conditional use is, is, is given by the planning board, and not the zoning board.
But it's, it's a condition of approval, not conditional use given by us.
Now that I'm saying it, conditional uses are kind of like a special exception, so, I, I'm trying to rephrase it in my mind, let's table it for next year.
Okay.
Because I, I don't have a good argument right now.
I think it's the planning board's way of putting it, so, special exception is actually given by the planning board.
It is, I have an argument somewhere, just not today.
So, we're going through, again, we didn't have a motion yet for that, did we?
We have no motion yet.
No, now we can't, an hour. I'm just, I'm just getting those, because we had a discussion there, but we had no motion there, so, again, we are number eight.
No, nine.
No, we're on.
Sorry, number nine, yeah, because we changed it, all right.
Nine to 12.
Number nine through 12, keep you straight, thank you, we've got two separate sets of notes and everything, so, yeah, we need a motion, Richard's just going to make a motion.
I need the motion from nine to 12 as written.
Are ready to go for public hearing on the ninth of January?
January.
Okay.
As written or as amended, because we did change these a little bit.
We didn't change anything else, but that, that other number one is, is coming to another
How's she age number seven?
We added some words, like roads, streets.
Then 10.
So, I think that's
We did, yeah, you're right.
I would say as amended.
As amended, yeah.
As amended, right.
Yeah, as amended, and then, go to the ninth, the public hearing on the ninth.
Special requirements we changed for wetland areas, we put WCD, just tweaked.
The small things.
Small things.
But it's ready for public hearing, was what we're asking, ready for public hearing, because we can't change very much during the public hearing, only a little bit of wording, cannot change the meaning of them at all, so, we're sure that's what we want, and that's where we're going.
You need a second.
I do need a second, it was Victoria, yeah.
She jumped on it.
Seconded by Victoria, is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Good, on board with that.
The public hearing will be January 9th, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Those notices will go out in a couple weeks, notices will go out on the 23rd, so.
Good work.
What about conservation?
Conservation Commission did it all, we just argued with them, that's all.
That's it.
So, anything else, any updates or anything like that, Adam, anything for the tip, I didn't make those tip meetings, so I wasn't there.
A boundary exists, it's the same boundary you saw, it just looks prettier, so, you'll see that in our next meeting.
Okay.
Is this something we need to do tonight?
That was, I think you must have brought that up, because
Oh, God, yes, I'm going crazy over here, public hearing, boundary line adjustments, by that I mean, do we need public hearings for boundaries?
We don't have, we aren't required by RSAs to have them, but we always do have them, but we don't have to, if it's, if it's a cost that we could save or something like that, but we still have to notify them
We do.
The same way, whether we're having a public hearing or not, correct?
We do, yeah, so, we still have the notice, but we don't need to do a public hearing notice.
No.
But we do need to do butters notices, our subdivision, our subdivision rules of procedure, our subdivision ordinance states that public hearings are not required for boundary line adjustments that do not create new buildable lots, I, I personally don't feel the need, though, I don't feel like we need public hearings for, for especially boundary line adjustments like we saw today.
We don't, yeah, I, I agree, too, we don't.
Obviously, the butters notices need to go out.
Yeah.
But we don't need public hearings for
Yeah, we are required to notify in the same way that we do notify for public hearings, so that everyone knows, but we just don't have to have a public hearing, so it's kind of a formality, it's, it's either I'm saying we're in a public hearing or not, that's pretty much the difference.
Butters are still getting notified, there's going to be notice on the board still, but
But, let's just have a vote by the board there, by a vote that we are or we are not going to have public hearings on boundary line adjustments that do not
Create new buildable lots.
Create new buildable lots, what are we going to do? A motion for one or the other?
Well
I will make that motion.
If, if we don't want to do this, then we need to amend our subdivision regulations.
No, let's, let's just have a vote, I'll make the motion that the planning board will no longer hold public hearings for lot line adjustments that do not create buildable lots.
Seconded.
Seconded by Richard, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so you'll have to keep me straight, because I will open up a public hearing.
I got you on that, no worries.
The only one thing, guys, we have finished up the CIPC.
Oh, yeah, let's hear from, from
If you want me to talk, we're going to be here until
No, give us a highlight.
I'll give you a couple highlights.
Thank you.
This is posted on our final account website, so you can look at the details of why, the firehouse, the new firehouse we own is going to be placed in $3.75 million.
What is it, how many, again, say it?
3.75.
3.75?
3.75.
Okay.
We moved, that engine two was supposed to be replaced this year, so we moved that one back to another year, with the, with the okay from the fire chief, he says that engine should have old piano for another year, the only other thing that I mentioned is the grange, as you know, last year, the CIPC was offering money to the grange, but somebody got up in the middle of the blimp and raised $110,000 for the grange, what we did this year, we put $75,000 contribution, but the grange people have to raise $75,000 and will match that $75,000, it has to be for the foundation, they didn't raise 20, grant $20,000, but the windows will stop, we're telling them, you can't do the windows until the foundation is, is secure, because you'll just waste them up.
So, how does that work, if it's appropriated, and they don't come up with their money, where does that go?
It's matching funds, they don't come up with their money, they don't gain it.
But isn't it set, I mean, isn't the budget set, and you're going to raise a certain amount of dollars, the town votes on it, and those dollars are included in that, so
It sits in an account.
But what happens to it? I mean, you know, things sit in an account, well, things
It may be, it certainly goes to general fund.
Yeah, that's right, and it, and it goes somewhere else.
We'll invest it.
Yeah.
But the building is owned by the town anyway, so it can probably sit there and do it once, I think it should, we can add a building.
But they also, it's a, it's a complete match, it's not like, they raise 50, they get 50, it's, they have to raise 75.
It probably should go into their, their fund that says they don't get it out until they get the 75, and then they'd be spent on that building.
That's the way it is written into the, into the plan, so.
Well, good one, okay.
That is the way it is.
Jay, do you have anything on the, on the fire department there? I haven't been to your meetings either, so.
We haven't had any meetings, Scott, and the reasons we're waiting for, for the, our DW, the cost estimate, and there's, they said the 18th, and it's not the 18th yet, it's another week or so, but we're hoping that they'll go quicker, Katie's been sending out things that were sent to you as well.
Yeah, I saw those.
Details that I have no idea about the expertise, whether this material, that material should be used, and she's basically telling me whatever's cheapest, whatever's cheapest.
She's been doing a good job there.
And, and I've been waiting to see if anybody can try to figure out that, but nobody of the five of us, the two firefighters you would need, and Jeff, have it chipped in, so, we're just waiting, and I'm, I'm hoping that maybe something will happen by Monday, we'll see.
Great.
And I'm, I had a call with Michael Bradley, he hasn't been to my call in a week, but I've asked him
Eleanor.